If you'll remember, we got fifty-one million total dollars from the American Rescue Plan. We allocated thirty-eight million dollars in Phase One and thirteen million dollars in Phase Two. So seventy-five percent in Phase One, Phase Two is the remaining twenty-five percent. We approved lots of projects in Phase One. We improved Robert Stale lead remediation. We approved Firehouse Number Two, Clark High School Infrastructure, Downtown Holman Avenue Reconstruction, the YMCA adjacent to the Sportsplex. I'm going to go through these slower, okay? New Calumet Avenue Pedestrian Bridge, Oxbow Road, J. F. Mahoney Drive, Storm Sewer on seven thousand block of Schneider, single-family home development in Hessville on Florida Avenue, Hessville Bridge, three point six million, Kennedy Avenue Reconstruction, software upgrades and cybersecurity upgrades, Columbia Avenue Water Tank, one million dollar repairs, and Hammond City Council Chamber updates. Those are all the projects we approved in Round One. And I'm going to go through each of these and give you an idea where the anticipated cost was and where it actually falls. So this isn't wonderful news, but it's something we need to talk about. Robert Stale lead remediation was four million dollar budget. Obviously, the cost has skyrocketed. Projected cost right now, five point five million, which leaves us one point five million over budget. Phase One's already been paid for. We are currently in Phase Two in that project. That's a project right around the north basin of George Lake where homes have lead contamination in excess of levels that we're comfortable with. Instead of going through the EPA, the city Hammond, through ARP, decided to take this project upon ourselves and clean it free of charge to the homeowners. We're in the project right now. We'll need another one point five million to complete it. Three point five million was anticipated for Firehouse Number Two, which is located in Robert Stale also. We figured station eight was four point two, so we figured Firehouse Number Two, because it's very similar, would come in right around that. It actually came in closer to six, two point five million dollars over. Three million in new infrastructure at Clark High School. We're in good shape on that. That's good news. Downtown Hammond, Holman Avenue Reconstruction Project, supposed to come in at, excuse me, five million dollars, excuse me, one point six million dollar overrun. Six point six is the number. YMCA Project adjacent to the Sportsplex, we anticipated five million and we're still on track with that. Three point five million for new Calumet Avenue Pedestrian Bridge between Hammond and Munster, a Fourth Avenue project. We got one million dollars donated towards that from the Little Calumet River Basin Authority. So thank you to our former colleague, Councilman Rippey, who's now in charge of Little Cal Task Force. That project came in at five point three. We're one point eight million short on that. Oxbow Road, we're finding another source of funding for that project. J. F. Mahoney Drive, cost came in four times higher, one point seven million. We're going to do that project with this, because I know that was very important to councilmen in that district. Storm Sewer on seven thousand block of Schneider. This project is nearly complete, came in on budget. Good news. Single-family home development on Florida Avenue in Hessville, eight hundred thousand dollars for that. On track, on budget. Good news. Three point six million for new Hessville Bridge to get residents over constantly stopped rail traffic. Cost came in at four million dollars, which is four hundred thousand over budget. Not horrible, but we have to make up for it. Five million for Kennedy Avenue Reconstruction Project in downtown Hessville, just like the downtown Hammond project. That project came in over budget, plus we added to that project by extending it south, excuse me, north to cover Freddie Steakhouse. That cost came in one point five million over budget. Software upgrades and cybersecurity, on track, on budget. One million towards Columbia Avenue Water Tank Repair. Project is completed, on budget. The council chamber technology upgrades, on track, on budget. That's the good news. So we do have cost overruns. We have to discuss what we're doing with those cost overruns with the council. I just want to be transparent about where we are. The cost overruns are about nine point six million dollars. So I wanted to give you guys the latest update. We approved a lot of projects in Round One. We expected them to come in at numbers that were reliable at the time we passed it. However, the world has changed, and this is where we stand. So we have some ideas I want to talk to you all about. I don't want to do it on the record. I want to do it, I would rather do it privately between us all first, and then hopefully we could reach some type of consensus on what to do. We still haven't spent a penny around two money. That's good news. So anyway, that's my report. Nice to see you, guys. I don't know if you have any questions. I'm obviously willing to answer. Hi, Councilman.
Everything you just said, was that on Phase One?
I don't know if they could hear you. I could hear you.
Everything that was said, was that about Phase One?
Yes, sir.
Or Phase One and Two?
No, that was Phase One. Phase Two, we didn't really, we've talked about Memorial Park in Phase Two. I know Councilman Berry's out there. We were hoping to get the South Hammond Fire Station done with Phase Two. I don't know, I mean, I'm committed to the South Hammond Fire Station. I don't know if it's going to be done with ARP money. I don't think we're going to be able to afford to do the South Hammond Fire Station with ARP money. I'm committed to the South Hammond Fire Station. I want Councilman Emerson to know that, and I want the Hammond Fire Department to know that, especially because we're literally knocking down old Station Five within the next couple of weeks. And the South Hammond Fire Station is the combined station that's going to take over for the Fives and the Seventh Service Territory. So, but yes, Councilman Mark, all those projects I mentioned were already approved by the council and the mayor during Phase One. But we approved an amount that we thought was going to be accurate, and my report is, unfortunately, it's not as accurate as we'd hoped. Questions?
Councilman.
The ARP dollars were intended to offset our losses during the pandemic. How much did we allocate toward the losses we incurred during the pandemic out of the ARP dollars? Do you know?
So are you talking about lost revenue from our budget, Councilman? You're talking budgetary losses?
Yes.
Yeah, none so far. None.
But we're supposed to take some of the ARP dollars into, put it in a general fund to manage the losses we incurred, right?
We could have done that. We chose not to. We did projects with it. You could do that. In fact, I know Gary, who's getting over two hundred percent compared to what we're getting, they're using a decent amount of that towards our budget. You have to go through calculations. Our controller would have to prove the losses to do that. But if, and we could do that easily if we had the money. So we would have to go through a lost revenue calculation, and if we did that, then we could prove to the government if it was two million dollars of lost revenue, and we could prove that, we could use two million dollars of ARP money for our general fund budget. True. We didn't do that so.
It wasn't clear that.
No, 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 that's true what you're saying. We just haven't done that yet. Phase One was all projects, sure.
Okay.
Yeah. I hate to be the bearer of bad news, but I don't, when you think about it, I don't think anybody's too shocked, because when you're paying five dollars plus for gas, a lot of our projects, you know, the materials that get here, they're all skyrocketing in costs, so everything's different. And the good news is, we were the first city to bid our projects out. So I can only imagine other cities that are going to be doing work next summer and the year after that, the world's changed, and everything's more expensive. And the money that we got, hopefully, is going to go a longer way than some of the people that are in the future. But anyway, I don't know if you have any other questions. But I hate to be the bearer of bad news. I just want to be transparent about where we are. And I'll be talking to you all about the proposals for Round Two, okay?
Anybody else have anything?
If it matters to anybody, I went through and there's a, we did pretty well spacing it out across the city. If there's any councilman that could be salty, because there's not a lot of projects in that person's district, it's Councilman Dave, quite frankly, and that's my district as well. It's getting projects. It's just not nearly the high-dollar projects that are growing out in other parts of the city. And it's not because I don't love the fifth district. That's where I live. It's just the projects seem to be, a lot of them in the third, a lot of them in the first, a couple of them in the second, you know, a couple of them in the sixth. But the projects in the sixth, like the bridge that's expensive, is going to help the residents of the fifth also, because I will use that bridge every day of my life, probably. So even though it may be in one district or in Councilman Berry's district, you know, there's a couple of projects in the third, and even though it's in the third, it's going to help the fifth too, because the third and the fifth intersect, you know, and they're real close. So anyway, I didn't mean to talk a lot. I apologize for the length. It's just, I went through this today with the controller, and I wanted to be transparent with the council about where we stand. So if there's no other questions, I'll say thank you and move on.
Anybody have any further questions? Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Item number four, approval of minutes.
Mr. President.
Councilman Spitali.
Most accepted minutes from June thirteenth, twenty twenty-two, and be placed on file, please.
Motion's been made by Councilman Spitali, seconded by Councilman Emerson. Is there any questions? Is there any questions? Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Clerk Golick, roll call.
Alexander.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Vanez.
Yes.
Kalwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Tyler. Emerson.
Yes.
Rakos.
Yes.
Warpo.
Yes, let the record show, nine in favor, zero opposed. Item number five, approval of claims.
Mr. President.
Councilman Rakos.
I'd approve claims dated at six seventeen, twenty twenty-two, and ending with claims dated six twenty-two, twenty twenty-two. Claim number thirty-six seventy through claim number thirty-nine forty, the amount of four million, one hundred eighteen thousand, eight hundred sixty dollars and twelve cents.
Second.
Motion's been made by Councilman Rakos, seconded by Councilwoman Vanez. Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Clerk Golick, roll call.
Alexander.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Vanez.
Yes.
Kalwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Tyler. Emerson.
Yes.
Rakos.
Yes.
Warpo.
Yes, let the record show, nine in favor, zero opposed. Item number six, public hearings.
Item A, ordinance number twenty-two dash twenty sponsored by Councilman Spitali, and ordinance to appropriate funds in Hotel Motel Innkeepers Tax Fund for economic development purposes in two thousand twenty-two. Item B, ordinance twenty-two dash twenty-one sponsored by Councilman Torres, and ordinance vacating a fourteen-foot wide alley of the fifty-two-hundred block of Holman Avenue, lying between Rimbach Street and Munich Court in the city of Hammond, Lake County, Indiana. Item C, ordinance number twenty-two dash twenty-two sponsored by Councilman Torres, and ordinance vacating a variable width alley of the one-hundred block of Sibley Street, lying between Sibley Street and Rimbach Street in the city of Hammond, Lake County, Indiana.
Does anybody wish to speak on any of these public hearings? Does anybody wish to speak on any of these public hearings? Does anybody wish to speak on any of these public hearings? Hearing none. Public hearings are now closed. Item number seven, communications. Councilman Kalwinski.
Just a quick announcement. The Pulaski Park Neighborhood Association will be meeting tomorrow at six-thirty at the Hammond Mohawks at one hundred forty-first and Calumet Avenue. Six-thirty till approximately eight o'clock. Thank you.
Anybody else wish to speak on the communications? Does anybody else wish to speak on the communications? Hearing none. Communications are now closed. Item number eight, committee reports.
Mr. President.
Councilman Spitali.
Council will be bringing out twenty-two twenty.
Is that it? Does anybody else have anything on the communication? And I'm sorry, committee reports.
Mr. President.
Councilman Torres.
Council as a whole will be bringing out twenty-two twenty-one and twenty-two twenty-two.
Thank you. Does anybody else have anything on the committee reports?
Yes, Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vanez.
I'd like to report on the Capitol Improvement Board meeting. We met on July twenty-first. We approved eighty-four thousand dollars for the Highland and Lyons eight-hundred-block parking reconfiguration design. We also approved sixty-seven thousand, five hundred twenty-five dollars for Holman Avenue Phase One Reconstruction Supplemental Utility Work with the Reith Riley Construction Company. We also approved forty-one thousand, three hundred eighty dollars and sixty-two cents for the Schneider Street Stormwater Project Change Order Number Two, the light pole relocation, unanticipated concrete removal, and additional asphalt milling. And again, that amount was forty-one thousand, three hundred eighty dollars and sixty-two cents. The next meeting of the Capitol Improvement Board will be on Tuesday, July fifth. Five fifteen P.M. is the work-study session, and five thirty P.M. is the regular meeting. I'd also like to announce the upcoming community and crime watch meetings. The only one that's coming up is on Thursday, July fourteenth. The Whiting-Robertsdale Crime Watch will meet at six-thirty P.M. They have a change of location for the summer, because Calumet College is closed for the summer. They will be meeting at the Mascot Hall of Fame in Whiting, and again, that's beginning at six-thirty P.M. And I would like to thank everyone who came out and filled out an application for the Free Security Light Program. We had about a hundred and twenty people apply for a program that offers sixty lights. So it's a hugely successful program. I thank everyone for their interest, and you will be receiving notification within the next week or so, whether or not you qualify for the light or not. It was on a first-come, first-served basis, and unfortunately, we can't serve everyone. But there's always next year. So thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Does anybody else have anything on the committee reports? Anybody else have anything on the committee reports? Hearing nothing else on committee reports. Committee reports are now closed. Item number nine, ordinances, third reading, and final passage.
Ordinance number twenty-two dash twenty sponsored by Councilman Spitali, and ordinance to appropriate funds in the Hotel Motel Innkeepers Tax Fund for economic development purposes in twenty twenty-two.
Mr. President.
Councilman Spitali.
Move for final passage on twenty twenty-two, twenty-two twenty, excuse me.
Second.
Motion's been made by Councilman Spitali, seconded by Councilman Emerson. Is there any discussion?
President.
Yeah, Councilman Spitali.
Disordinance, it's appropriate for funds, the Hotel Motel Innkeepers Tax Fund for economic development. The Innkeeper's Tax Fund is used for marketing purposes for events, advertisement, economic development for the city of Hammond. Thank you.
Is there any further discussion? Is there any further discussion? Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. Clerk Golick, roll call.
Alexander.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Vanez.
Yes.
Kalwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Tyler. Emerson.
Yes.
Rakos.
Yes.
Warpo.
Yes, let the record show, nine in favor, zero opposed.
Ordinance twenty-two dash twenty-one sponsored by Councilman Torres, and ordinance vacating a fourteen-foot wide alley of the fifty-two-hundred block of Holman Avenue, lying between Rimbach Street and Munich Court in the city of Hammond, Lake County, Indiana.
Mr. President.
Councilman Torres.
Move for final passage of ordinance twenty-two twenty-one.
Second.
Motion's been made by Councilman Torres, seconded by Councilman Emerson. Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion?
Mr. President.
Councilman Torres.
It's an ordinance vacating a fourteen-foot wide alley of the fifty-two-hundred block of Holman Avenue, lying between Rimbach and Munich Court in the city of Hammond, and needed for the completion of the downtown project. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. Clerk Golick, roll call.
Alexander.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Vanez.
Yes.
Kalwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Tyler. Emerson.
Yes.
Rakos.
Yes.
Warpo.
Yes, let the record show, nine in favor, zero opposed.
Item C, ordinance twenty-two dash twenty-two sponsored by Councilman Torres, and ordinance vacating a variable width alley of the one-hundred block of Sibley Street, lying between Sibley Street and Rimbach Street in the city of Hammond, Lake County, Indiana.
Mr. President.
Councilman Torres.
Move for final passage of ordinance twenty-two twenty-two.
Second.
Motion's been made for final passage and adoption by Councilman Torres, seconded by Councilman Emerson. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President.
Councilman Torres.
Make a motion to amend ordinance twenty-two twenty-two with the ordinance twenty-two twenty-two A in its entirety.
Second.
Motion's been made to amend the ordinance by Councilman Torres, seconded by Councilwoman Vanez. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President.
Councilman Torres.
On the first ordinance twenty-two twenty-two, there was a type error, and that's why it's been replaced by twenty-two twenty-two A. The error's been corrected. And actually, the ordinance is to vacate a variable width alley of the eleven, of one-hundred block of Sibley Street, lying between Sibley and Rimbach Street, also needed for the completion of the downtown project. And the error was that the one-hundred block on one page was referred as the eleven-hundred block, and that was corrected. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion on the amendment? Is there any further discussion on the amendment? Hearing no further discussion on the amendment. Clerk Golick, roll call on the amendment.
Alexander.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Vanez.
Yes.
Kalwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Tyler. Emerson.
Yes.
Rakos.
Yes.
Warpo.
Yes, let the record show, nine in favor, zero opposed. Clerk, Clerk Golick, roll call on the ordinance as amended.
As amended. Alexander.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Vanez.
Yes.
Kalwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Tyler. Emerson.
Yes.
Rakos.
Yes.
Warpo.
Yes, let the record show, nine in favor, zero opposed. Motion carries.
President Warpo, that concludes the reading of the ordinances for final passage.
Thank you, Clerk Golick. Item number ten, introduction of ordinances.
Item A, ordinance twenty-two dash twenty-three sponsored by Councilman Torres, and ordinance vacating an eighty-nine point sixty-three-foot portion of the one-hundred block of Sibley Street in the city of Hammond, Lake County, Indiana.
Mr. President.
Councilman Torres.
Move for first and second reading of ordinance twenty-two twenty-three, referred to council as a whole, with a public hearing of July eleventh, twenty twenty-two.
Second.
Did you want the council as a whole on July eleventh as well?
Yes.
At five fifteen?
Five fifteen.
Thank you. Motion's been made by Councilman Torres, seconded by Councilman Emerson. Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Clerk Golick, roll call on the motion.
Alexander.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Vanez.
Yes.
Kalwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Tyler. Emerson.
Yes.
Rakos.
Yes.
Warpo.
Yes, let the record show, nine in favor, zero opposed.
Item B, ordinance twenty-two dash twenty-four sponsored by Councilman Torres, and ordinance vacating a fifty-two-foot portion of Rimbach Street, lying between Holman Avenue to the east and extending approximately two hundred and twenty-six point fifty feet west of the city of Hammond, Lake County, Indiana.
Mr. President.
Councilman Torres.
Move for first and second reading, referred to council as a whole, with a public hearing on seven eleven twenty-two, five fifteen.
Motion's been made by Councilman Torres, seconded by Councilman Spitali. Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Clerk Golick, roll call.
Alexander.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Vanez.
Yes.
Kalwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Tyler. Emerson.
Yes.
Rakos.
Yes.
Warpo.
Yes, let the record show, nine in favor, zero opposed.
President Warpo, that concludes the introduction of ordinances.
Thank you, Clerk Golick. Moving on the agenda, item eleven, resolutions, there are none. Item twelve, new and unfinished business.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vanez.
Yes, I neglected under committee reports to announce that on July eleventh, which is our next council meeting, the Animal Control Committee will be meeting at four thirty P.M. to discuss ordinance number twenty-two nineteen.
Thank you. Does anybody else have anything on the new and unfinished business?
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Alexander.
I wanted to remind the class of twenty twenty-two that college-bound applications are due this Friday, July first, in City Hall. And then also, I saw that our fire chief had put out about fireworks, and just wanted to remind residents that between the hours of five P.M. and two hours after sunset from June twenty-ninth, thirtieth, July first, July second, July third, July fifth, sixth, seventh, eighth, and ninth, and then on July fourth, from ten A.M. to midnight, for fireworks to be put off in the city. And just also be mindful of keeping everybody safe. Make sure you keep water, water hoses, buckets, and things like that to make sure that things do not catch on fire throughout the city on the fourth.
Anybody else have anything on the new and unfinished business?
Yes, Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vanez.
Thank you, Councilwoman Alexander, for announcing those hours for fireworks. And my request to the neighborhoods is, please just be respectful of your neighbors. You know, don't blow somebody out of their chair with these big booms. It's frightening for some of the seniors. It's frightening for some of the pets. It's just all-around frightening. So please, try to be respectful of your neighborhood. And speaking of fireworks, on the Fourth of July, the city of Hammond will be celebrating the Fourth beginning at six-thirty P.M. with the Bill Porter Orchestra, followed by fireworks at nine-thirty P.M. at the pavilion. Please bring your chairs and blankets. Outside food and drink is welcome, and just enjoy our independence. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody else have anything on the new and unfinished business?
Mr. President.
Councilman Emerson.
I'd like to announce, I received this, a free soccer camp July eleventh through fifteenth, from six P.M. to eight P.M. for boys and girls ages five to thirteen years old at Edison Park in Hammond, and that's located at Jackson and Mulberry. Play for prizes, learn. Play for prizes, learn basic soccer drills. Online registration at cfc-church.net, or call 219-931-5177 for more information. They say here, hurry and register, space is limited, and this is sponsored by the Christian Fellowship Church. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody else have anything on the new and unfinished business? Anybody else have anything on the new and unfinished business? Does anyone else have anything on the new and unfinished business? Hearing none. New and unfinished business is now closed. Item number 13, public expression. Ken Rosick? Please state your name and address, please. You have three minutes.
Yes, my name is Ken Rosick. Hi, Mr. President. I'd like to say greetings to the councilmen and women here. I would like to talk about a section of town that I grew up in named Hessville, and the Briar East Woods that are in the center of Hessville. These woods are woods that I grew up in, and they have, they are the last remnant of the high, tallest, and dunes in Hammond. They are 4,000 years old. They have thousands of trees in it, mostly native. They have oak, white oak, red oak, cherry, and a number of other trees in there. There's a lake out there where great blue herion will hang out, double-crested cormorant, bald eagles hang out there. They don't nest there, but they do perch in the trees up in the Briar East Woods. And there are thousands, tens of thousands, they say, of migrating birds that rely on these woods. I have filmed nesting red-tailed hawks that have raised nestlings right in the center of these woods, along with owls that people have witnessed also have nesting sites throughout these woods. It has been said by one city official that these are low-quality woods. When we had a discussion at Mayor's Night Out back in December, I would like to point out that the person who belongs to the United States Department of Interior and Wildlife Service, Mrs. Elizabeth McCluskey, did a report for the City of Hammond and Indiana Department of Transportation. She was astonished when she discovered that were dunes in this area. Now, this is a woman that knows everything about Northwest Indiana. She has a lot to do with what happened in the preservation of Gibson Woods. She wrote in the assessment that the woodland that would be impacted by the proposed project is partially a remnant of a native sand dune and wetland swale ecosystem that existed in this part of Hammond at the time of the city's founding. She goes on and on and talks about all of the native species that are within these woodlands, within the center of Hammond. I would like to go on and discuss many things about these woods. I would like to say that the city is proposing to build a bridge through them. We have numerous people that are totally against this project. The City of Hammond plans to build a bridge. It started out as an $8 million project, now, three years ago, now it's 12.5 billion, and I got a feeling it's probably going to double. The number-one problem, the city says, with not having a bridge there is that the kids can't get to and from school. I would like to say and prove that the City of Hammond and the bridge where located will not solve that problem. Residents of all, the city wrote, residents of all ages about the line and inability to cross due to standing trains. Witnesses have seen parents tell their children to climb through the standing trains in order for the child to make it to school on time. This was in the city statement, in a statement to the Department of-
Mr. Rosick, you get three minutes, and you're already at four, so can you wrap it up, please?
Okay, I'd like to wrap it up, then. Anyway, the bridge will take two miles for somebody to actually get around and for the schoolkids to use this bridge. Hessville preserved our dunes during the early 1900s when we were not a part of Hammond. Now, 100 years later, now that we are a part of Hammond, looks like Hammond's going to be the ones that finally does the men. And I think this is, this is a tragedy. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is George Stoya. He passes. Anybody on Zoom? Was that you raising your hand, Councilman Tyler? Hearing none. Public expression is now closed. I want to entertain a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Motion's been made.
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Rakos. Motion was made by Councilwoman Alexander. Clerk Golick roll call.
Alexander.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Kowinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Rakos.
Yes.
Orpel.
Yes. Motion carries. Meeting is adjourned.